It's actually been a better day than I expected. Good evening. My name is Matt Lewis and I'm the Scottsville Town Administrator. You're now viewing the Scottsville Town Council Work Session for June 14th, 2021. Thank you for joining us here in the public meeting and if you're viewing in the future on the Town YouTube Channel, thank you very much for your interest. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. The public officials who will be present, in person or electronically at this meeting, are Mayor Ron Smith, council members Lindsay Brown, Zach Bullock, Dan Ritzko, Laura Muluski, Stuart Munson, and Eddie Penny. Town staff members are also present for this meeting and the public has several opportunities to absorb and participate. These are listed at the University of Old Town office on the town website. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on all that matters. Thank you so much for your involvement in participation. We're still about six minutes away from our, from the post that started our meeting. It's six minutes till seven local time here. So if you're viewing in the future on YouTube, just skip ahead on your video five minutes and we'll assemble our farm, get our room set up and we'll be ready to go. Thank you very much.
One, two.
I can hear you Jim.
How are you Mr. Payne?
Hey bear for old guy, how about you?
I'm still kicking just a little bit. Maybe I can jump about a half an inch off the floor.
That's my problem. I can't kick.
I just barely kick. Hey, I'll be right back. I got five minutes. I'm gonna finish my dinner.
Okay.
Good talking to you.
We'll see.
That's a good looking guy, Thomas. Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry there. Yes, Jim. Yeah, that's Charlie. Lauren and I, uh, this one Monday of the month both have meetings that overlap. So it's a little bit of a juggling act.
So I look, I look forward to seeing more of Charlie.
I'm sure. I think he might be making an appearance in the scan meeting right now.
Yep, that is still going on.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is a lack of seven and Lindsay can join us at some point. So we'll just start around the top of the agenda. We asked Chief Bowling to give his report please. Evening everybody. It's good to see you all. Matt's gonna make me a participant here where I can share my screen. You know, my monthly report's gonna look a little bit, you know, only because I created it. All right. And some of what I'm gonna show you is a matter of public information. That's it. So this is, this website right here is actually a website created so that we can see the results of what data has been collected since July 1 of 2020 related to traffic stops. And you can see the date here shows from July to May of this year. And it's specific to Scottsville only. Okay? As you can see, I hope you can see anyway, initial reason for the stop. Most of them are for traffic violations, the result of the spot stops. Seventy percent have been issued summonses, only thirty percent have been given warnings. It shows stopped by dates. That information there is not accurate. And I tried to play with it a little bit to make it more visible, but I can't seem to figure that part out. As you can see here, it's also sorts by age. So we've got from as early as what appears to be sixteen or even fifteen maybe up until about eighty-five. And then here are the filters. Each one shows by race. And you can see accordingly. All right. We'll go down a little further on that and it also shows by gender. And you'll notice here that one hundred percent of the vehicles have not been searched because we had no reason to search them. And then of course, was a person searched? That was no. And then we've not made any additional arrests such as, I say such. But an example would be an outstanding warrant on the driver if we happened to stop him and find that out. We haven't had that since, incidentally. Okay? We'll go now to the monthly report.
So that's, that's really interesting Jeff. So that's, that's a website that anybody can go visit and they can compare police departments. Every department in the state is doing this.
Yes.
And, and you can see how your traffic report compares to another department's.
Notice here I put in Alamo County Police Department. You can go to Augusta County Police Department Sheriff's. Of course it doesn't pull it out, but it's, it's state, it's department specific or you can do it statewide. Okay?
You've been filling out these reports for over a year and the state just now launched the website that pulls it up.
They launched it, I think, a couple months ago. It is a public website, something that you can access and review the data that's been entered. That being said, let's go to the monthly report. So what you're seeing here is a lot of the calls that were responded to. Forgery, suspicious activity assist agencies, the typical stuff we regularly respond to. I don't know if you had any information related to it, but there was a search warrant that was issued and executed by the Alamo County Police Department earlier this week. According to the new regulations, I can tell you without divulging a lot of information that no one has any reason for concern about the safety of the citizens or anyone around that house. You're perfectly safe at this stage. Nor do I anticipate anybody being in danger as a result of it. Because it's an ongoing investigation, it's not information I can release. We have, I think we wrote five summonses last month. One of our officers is on light duty right now, so he's not patrolling, running tickets. Our other officer was on a significant amount of leave over the course of the month. And some of those summonses were issued by me and I think there was a couple issued by Alamo County Police. So our summons total is lower because of various circumstances. We are in the process of, almost at the conclusion of a background investigation for a part-time officer. And hopefully that will conclude, or all the information I need to gather will conclude by the end of this week. But at this stage of the day, I'm still waiting on a reply. So does anybody have any questions?
What was the website?
It shares our website. There's lots of them. So go to that data.virginia.com to see what that website looks like.
Okay.
Yeah.
You put me back down there. So if you can see it. It's, yeah, you can't even read it up there, so it's difficult to see. I'll, I'll send the email or not the email, but the link to Matt and Matt can share it accordingly. Okay?
Chief, we have the, the financial paperwork for your vehicle replacement grant and loan up on a little bit later in the agenda.
Okay.
Is there anything you're unsure about that?
At this stage of the game, we've got a lot of the quotes that we need. We don't have all of them. I'm hoping to receive a vehicle within the next three weeks and start to get it equipped. I'm not certain of a date that we would actually have it in town and on patrol. But Officer Taylor, who has been the officer of light duty, is doing all of that work for me. And he's doing a good job at it. He's able to do a lot of, make a lot of contacts, talk to quite a few people. And he's done an outstanding job so far.
So you have it prepared. Yeah, your council approves that you can, you can get all that right?
Within, when we get, when we get the required quotes, we have to have it because of the procurement issues with federal, with federal grants. We have some hoops we gotta go through, but he's well on the way to having that completed.
Chief, I've got a question for you.
Yes.
I love data, love looking at data, love analyzing data. And when I look at this data, it looks to me like a proof that we have a police department that is nonviolent, moderate, even if racially fair in terms of, you know, who we're pulling over. And I think this paints a really, really positive picture of, you know, your department. And I'm wondering if there's any way that you can think of that we might be able to use this data to sort of communicate that fact out.
You kind of caught me off guard. I don't that data source is, is public information.
Yeah.
Don't think, well, it's not a think, it's, I'm sure that the state would not have any issue related to sharing that data on our Facebook page or our website. And I don't think that the town, that they would prevent the town from putting the link up there so people could look at it.
Okay. I think that would be a great idea because, you know, data doesn't lie, you know, it's I don't think so, but you know, it shows. I think it's, it's, it's something that we can use to, you know, change the perspective of the town, you know, and something that we use that's the good hard pass, you know, proof that, that, you know, we are welcoming of everybody and we're not, we're not, you know, going after anybody in particular and, you know, we're a very moderate place and a safe place for you to come and enjoy.
That's certainly what we want.
Yep. So Matt, is there some way we can do that? Is there some way we can put something on the town website just saying, hey look, here's our police department. We're proud of them. They're, they are, you know, doing a great job and we want you to know that.
Absolutely. Happy to work with you about that.
Yeah, most other jurisdictions, if you go to like Alamo County and you click on the police department, you can pull up all their statistics or any other city in town. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have a, have a link on our website to the police department statistics or something like that. And just let people go on their own and check it out. It's like that. Okay? Anything else with Jake? Okay. Thanks so much.
Actually, I do have one thing before you go. And I'm jumping a little bit ahead. I know we're gonna be talking a little bit about what we want to have, what, what we want to do with marijuana in our use in our parks. And I'm just wondering if the chief could give us his thoughts on that because he's probably a person who's gonna be dealing with it more than anybody else.
Interestingly enough, we just had a class this morning and the new marijuana laws and what kicks in on July 1. And it's a whole lot more data and detail. I say data, but a whole lot more detail than we had time for me to share with you today. Or all of you, I should say. If you want to come down tomorrow and speak with me about it, I can show you what we have as far as the education phase goes in the laws and how they address certain things. They have moved the marijuana laws from Title eighteen point two to Title four point one. Even though they legalize it, there's still certain amounts that you can't possess. Or if you exceed those limits, you're in violation of possessing marijuana laws because of that. It is illegal for you to smoke marijuana while you're driving a car, for instance, similar to the open container alcohol issues. In speaking with, well, listening to the class today, there was a Commonwealth attorney that came from Colorado that said they have a large spike increase of DUIs as a, as a result of intoxication from the marijuana. And that presented, in his opinion, it presented some confusion on the general public when they passed that law. And I think probably because it was the way it was advertised. I can only assume at this stage. But those are some of the difficulties we're gonna have to traverse through as we move forward when these laws take effect. Take effect into
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. You were about to say, they take effect what? I'm sorry, I said that.
July 1.
This is Dan speaking. Definitely not one who's a fan of marijuana in any, in any shape or form. But the one thing I would say, going back to Stuart's comment and related to enforcement and what we have to do in terms of the way state law is, one of the things, I'm more saying this to the you, and I guess I would just say, I just think smoking in general is a bad example of, you know, it's not a good thing to do. And if people are doing it, you know, publicly versus them doing it privately. So, you know, privately doing it at their house versus publicly doing it in a park or somewhere. Legally, is there a difference between that? That, that doesn't happen for, that's not right now, correct?
No, but as, as of July 1st, certain portions of that regulation will be eliminated. And those, you might see those types of things occurring in a public place. If I remember correctly, there's certain public places that you can't. But at this stage, without having the documentation in front of me, I'd be lying to you if I told you any of what they were.
Right. And so if, so if we, if we were to ban it from certain public places, which I very much would intend to do, then we would, that's the kind of thing we would need your help to back up if, if it was passed.
Yes.
Well, you may be able to ban all smoking, including cigarette smoking.
Say, say again Jim?
I mean, basically at the degree you lump it in with cigarettes, you may have more success.
I think that's kind of where I'm going, Mr. Bowling, is census. I mean, we've been on a campaign for, what, fifty, sixty years? I know there are smokers and I respect people's right to smoke. But what I want is not to encourage a young generation and to, it almost seems like we take forty steps backwards if we start to allow any type of public smoking where we've just suggested for sixty years, it's a bad idea. So it seems crazy that we would do that.
Well, you know, I don't know if I'd like to respect your right. I don't respect anybody's right to kill themselves quickly or slowly. I mean, basically, really at the public's expense all from because of the excess medical expenses involved. But that's another discussion. But the ability to regulate smoking in public, certainly you can do that in your public buildings. And, and you can do that with your employees, albeit you have to allow them to go outside in a designated smoking area to do it. And I think you may be able to do it in an area that's more, that it has certain parameters to it. For example, public performance or this or that or the other. Where, where it gets weakened is the fact that the tobacco lobby has fiercely fought any regulation in that arena. And still does.
Thanks, Mr. Bowling. That, that's helpful. And thank you, Chief. Just, just as we look into how to, I mean, the, the state did what the state did that's happening, how we are an example to young children, that's my concern.
So Chief, I was just wondering if you, if you, from a police perspective, have anything that you would like us to keep in mind as we consider this before you go?
My feelings are similar to Dan's. I just don't legalize marijuana. I don't smoke and never have. So that's my personal perspective, but you know, you have constitutional rights and you can exercise those rights as long as you're not infringing against someone else's constitutional rights. So it's really a personal choice. I'd be more than willing to sit in and discuss options that we have. But just based on this conversation here, I'm really, probably not a good idea to give me an opinion other than what I share personally.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I've got just a question you can answer it now or, or later maybe. But I'm curious how this, how the marijuana laws are gonna sort of parallel alcohol laws? You know, I mean, marijuana is still an intoxicant. So if you're, if you've smoked marijuana and you're driving, you're still gonna get a DUI just like if you'd had four beers and got behind the wheel. And as I understand it, you can't drink alcohol in public parks. Is that right?
Yeah, I think, I don't think you can.
But that's what I'm saying.
That's correct.
So I'm just curious, like, if, if marijuana sort of falls in line with alcohol in the same kind of way. I, I find it odd that, and I know, and I'm referencing Matt's email specifically here, the notion that you could smoke in a public park. It's, it just seems inconsistent with how the state treats other things that are considered legal intoxicants.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. I think there's a law or the opposite. More regulation of what you're talking about. And similarly, if anything else is intoxicant, such as marijuana or alcohol or cigarettes for that matter, will be regulated in a similar manner.
Jim, let me ask you if I can, according to the Dylan law, we only can pass laws that the state allows us to pass.
That's right.
So where do we stand there?
Well, I mean, you're gonna follow the lead here. You're not leading the pack. And basically you go to sit back and wait and there'll, there'll be some regulation, but it's more than there is now. But I think that you have the ability right now to forbid smoking in your public buildings, whether it be marijuana or incense or what have you, or tobacco. And I think you can also do that in, in, I would say public parks probably. If it's, if you have a dense enough area to do it. If you have a concert, you could say there's a no smoking event and so forth. Maybe I'd have to look at seasonality. General Assembly has phased your authority to do that as a result of tobacco lobby's influence.
So, so no matter what we're talking about now, we'll find out later.
That's right. Stay tuned.
Okay. Because this raises some concerns for, for me and the discussion with the events committee because we host events in public parks and town and parks that have alcohol permits to serve alcohol. So knowing where the, this lands with smoking in combination with the alcohol is really important for us hosting events and also for the police to sort of clarify. So the lack of clarity is a bit concerning as we open up for events in the coming year.
No, it's, it's not, it's not, ask Jeff. I don't think this is untypical. There's always gray areas when you have new laws. There's always gray areas when you have new laws.
Right. Okay. Well, just full disclosure that we're going to be having alcohol at upcoming events in public town and parks.
Yeah, maybe we've done that. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we do that. We get the, you know, we know that works. You get the permit and it rolls. So. Yeah. So what's up with us? We've been able to make, and by say, and when I say we, I mean, Matt has been able to make contact with some poor rated property owners. And we've gotten some traction there, some follow-up. We need to get some COAs on the books. But we've at least had communication and a plan for moving forward. So that, that's been encouraging. And that includes CSX, who's going to have some regional representatives coming up from, from Florida, I think, to look at the bust depot. So I think we've, we've made some good progress in the last few months, or last month in that way. So looking forward to keeping that up. Two other things that I, that I would like to hear council's feedback about. One is our Town of Scottsville sign. We looked at a couple mockups at our meeting. But since it is the town sign, I don't want the ARB to make a decision. I mean, we're going to approve a sign and basically what we do is we look at the size and the materials. That's kind of like the ARB's purview when it comes to signage. But since it's representing the town and we are all representing the town, I feel like it would be helpful to have the council's input on the, on the sign design itself. So that's the first thing I would like feedback about. And then the second is a recent law that was passed during this session of the General Assembly related to clutter on properties. So basically what this did, it's HB 1778, HB 1778. It basically authorized the locality by ordinance to remove or to require the removal of clutter from property. When, and I'm quoting here, whenever the governed body, governing body deems it necessary, except on land it's owned for like farming, et cetera. And the bill defines clutter as including mechanical equipment, household furniture, containers, and similar items that may be detrimental to the well-being of a community when they are left in public view for an extended period or are allowed to accumulate. And I, and I bring this up to you all this evening because being on the ARB, we've talked with property owners who have been concerned about the accumulation of clutter on properties in the historic overlay district specifically. And I know that this board has discussed clutter issues. And we haven't been able, we don't do anything because it's not an impediment to health. And Thomas has been pretty clear to like, if it's not a problem for public health, then we have no recourse. This, this authorizes us to have recourse to these situations. And so I have a question for Jim. One is, you know, given that this is largely a historic overlay district issue, I don't think this is an issue that the whole town is interested in necessarily. Would it be possible to, if we were interested in exploring something like this, to make this an ordinance that only applied to the historic overlay district?
Sounds like it would be. I run into this, not, not in, not frequently, but not infrequently either with homeowners associations. An example being somebody who is in the buying and selling of, let's take an example, lawn furniture or deck furniture. And all of a sudden, he has some tasteful lawn furniture in his backyard. The only trouble is he has about 50 sets of it. That's clutter. I mean, the difficulty is defining how you get there. So, but you have some flexibility there that town, town council might not because of the uniqueness of your role in historical districts, which gives you control over aesthetics, if you want to call it that, whatever that is.
Whatever that is, he says. Yeah. And so, okay, so I guess that answers my question. So if we, because I don't know if we'd want to apply this townwide, for example, but we might want to just apply it within the historic overlay district. And so you're saying that we could do that?
I think you can, yeah. I mean, where you get into problems, for example, if somebody particularly likes, and here I'm kind of, you know, I like a little, let's say somebody likes, likes to line his driveway with old cars, tires, that's an eastern shore pronunciation, and paint them white and put the patinias in them. I personally don't mind one, but maybe about 20 of them might get on my nerves. So it's that, it's that kind of situation. If you say no old cars allowed if they're painted white, unless they're painted white with roses in them or something, you know, I don't know. But it seems like you can limit the certain, the items that are collected. Another classic example is sofas on the front porch, you know, one, one's probably fine. Six, I think you're in business. I could get my teeth into six. But again, if you're in the historical district, it gets to be a lot easier than if you're enforcing six out in the, outside of the district. Although to a certain extent, I don't think this new language is, is limited to historical districts. And, and you're kind of in the same area where, where cities like the tread, but counties avoid it like plague. And that is enforcing how long the grass is in, in certain lots. Because what's one person's too long and it's another person's nature garden. I'm rambling a little bit, but you see where I'm going. I think I got the sense that you wanted to restrict it to at least start out with historical districts to try to get your teeth around it.
Yeah, it, it just, yeah, it just resonates. This is an issue that's just come up and we seem to not be able to do much. But like I said, I don't think this is something that would be suitable for the town at large. So that's what I was looking for council's feedback about.
My other thought is on entrance corridors.
Mayor Smith, before we move on to another, Zach, did you want to bring up the sign before we move out of our ARB report?
Yeah, unless you, well, yeah, and I guess, and there's nothing else about the, this clutter issue? Okay. All right. I'm going to bring it back up to the ARB in July or August. And we'll see if people are interested in mocking something up. Yeah, but the other one is the sign. I don't know if you want to wait for that, Matt, until we do the DMV later in the agenda, or if you want to share it now?
The one thing, hey Zach, can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
I'm not proposing any design, but I will say, whatever we do in terms of how we do it could be important. So it just, it's not, again, I'm not sure the right process. Maybe, I might even ask Mayor Smith if he recalls an earlier time. I don't. In terms of how we decided some of the brand, and it kind of gets into the branding or the, or the imagery of the town. So that's, that's kind of where, and sometimes just the right little image or picture can make a big, big difference.
Yes, yes, that's true. So ARB talked about this and went back and forth on which logo set to use. We have, we have two images that we use for town branding. One is the steel design, which is on our lecture and our letter day with the bacto on the image of the river scorching. There's also a more contemporary stylized design that's two tone blue with the image of the horseshoe bend of the river in light of blue on the field. We use that on our website and our business. So ARB on one way and the other, on which they prefer. I don't have a artist's proof on this yet, but they're leaning towards the town seal design, which is the more sort of formal and official. The place where this goes is right here. DMV gave us a sign that would hang on this pole that says Scottsville DMV Select. And so we need another plate to go on this location and identify that it's also the town office and replace this wood sign. I think those should both be printed metal to match the materials. DMV has delivered the one that requires us to use that. So we have to match it under it. ARB was leaning towards a plain plate, high contrast with the more formal of the logos. Are there any town council impressions, first thoughts on that?
You might not be sharing the right screen.
We have a zoning notice.
No, well, that's not helpful at all. Thank you very much.
Yeah. The other thing I'll say is, as you're pulling this up, Matt. So the idea is to have two swinging signs there where the current town office's sign is, DMV on the bottom and the new town office's sign on top. One of the things the ARB discussed is that the, the DMV sign is rather institutional. The DMV does not pride itself, Jim, on aesthetics. And so there was some discussion about, do we even want, you know, this DMV sign on the outside of the building? And at our last discussion, we sort of, we, we discussed that once the DMV gains traction, we may not need that DMV select sign out front. Right now, it's kind of important to have it out there just to make sure everybody knows where it is. But once we gain some traction, it might not be permanently affixed on the side of the building. We might move it, you know, inside under the awning or something like that. So, so anyway, so as we're thinking about the town offices sign, it's possible that that sign will also be there alone after a couple of years if we feel like the DMV select sign can move to another location.
Right. So simple, the more formal logo, high contrast. I can get a little bit of artistic that it's on this from the printer. But one choice is which logo HB 1 needs. And do you have a preference on the branding of this building? This is the sign frame that we're looking at. Stan has theirs over here. And they also have some new logo printing coming in. We do have options about where else we could put the sign. It could go on this pole. It could go on the sidewall of the building. ARB was looking for a little bit of feedback on that one topic.
Send your thoughts into Zach on that. Actually, move on.
Okay.
Anything else, Zach?
No, that's it.
Okay, planning commission, I'm going to ask Zach to share some highlights of the reading.
Planning commission had their full attendance in person. It felt pretty good and was a cheerful moment. The commissioners have not ever met each other on their current roster in person. So a sign of things to come. We had, we had some participation on Zoom still, but we had a voting forum and full membership here in the meeting. Mr. Josh Peck is ending his term as chair this month. So the planning commission had fielded applications and had one applicant, Ms. Vera Matthew Johnson. He's a longtime resident of Savannah County, Savannah County high school graduate, working in town as an editor online and is a bartender here in person. He sort of fills Josh's demographic role of tenant representation on the planning commission. He spoke very well about his qualifications and planning commission forwarded a recommendation to his appointment, to Josh's term expiring on June 30. Planning commission was not able to hold their public hearing on the zoning map amendments because their public notice didn't go out in the mail on time, for which I apologize. So they went back to the original idea of Mr. Munson's on town council of holding a joint meeting for the zoning map amendments topic. They can, they can meet their public notice obligations by meeting jointly with you next week on the 21st. And they actually appreciated that on reflection that that was them sharing that with you directly and discussing changes, final information, respond to the public hearing together by meeting jointly on the 21st. So if that suits, that's something they can act on with you next week.
I was just going to say a little procedure on that, since this will be the last time we really get to chat about it before then. I think what we'll probably try to do is a different format for the Zoom meeting. Matt and I will play around with this and see if we can get it to work. If not, we'll just do it like this and everyone, please be on your behavior. Otherwise, what we'll try to do is set up two panels so that we can have the planning commission be panelists as they run their meeting. Once they gavel themselves out of their public hearing and close their meeting, we'll elevate the town council members to panelists. And then you guys will be able to carry on with your meeting. But that, that'll just kind of help us control a little bit of the cross flow of talk and information as we move through that. Make a little more clear to the public who's having what meeting when.
The other informational presentation from planning commission was an excellent presentation by our graduate planning intern, Milius from VCU, about the comprehensive plan process. The town's comprehensive plan setting the strategy for our development, public facilities and strategy dates to 2018. So we have a few new planning commission members who weren't present for that process. So they got to hear at a high level what the purpose of the comprehensive plan is and what's involved in an update. That took the better part of a year and a half when the town put it on last time. So it won't be too long before we start thinking about the 2023 comprehensive plan. So they looked at some examples of best practices, especially from Richmond, where Andy's very familiar with the process underway. Richmond has an excellent looking plan and did a good job of managing in-house public engagement, put some consulting resources for map making and engineering. So planning commission, we need to think about how we want to take that home. Thank you.
Only one more thing I'd add. In addition to Matthew Johnson's nomination to Josh's vacancy, Shannon Strasner's seat is in need of renewal as well. So we'll have two nominations for planning commission for you to consider next month.
She's interested in continuing, sir?
Yes.
We're here approaching the end of our fiscal year. That ends on June 30. Town council acted last month on supplemental appropriation for the current budget year. So that gives us a very clear target to kind of end this campus budget and close it out. That's moving along just fine. Our local revenues look strong. Again, statewide, sales tax and meal tax are stronger than we expected. It's a, it's a vibrant economic recovery. Let's focus on make up the lost time and go out spending. And we've seen that here with good litter conditions, active traffic at the outfitters and our restaurants, and the opening of new businesses and vacant toilets. One of the silver linings to this recession is that some folks took the opportunity to take on new things and start up new businesses. So we've seen that some here in town. So congratulations and welcome to our new businesses. We're closing out accounts for this fiscal year and making sure that we hit outstanding targets. That means that we can, we can go purchase some items that we weren't sure if we were able to right at the end of this fiscal year. Other projects that have fallen as we hit the end of that line item. But we can monitor that, that seems like a police budget, what a quickness area to get out of time. Mr. Bolle mentioned checking on the pricing for his police vehicle and all the equipment that's in that. Make sure we get that done on one side or the other of this fiscal year. We also have an agenda item on American Rescue Plan. But that's definitely our biggest treasure is matter of significant new funds coming in. And new and important auditing and accounting requirements that we have to learn and make sure that we do well. The town's audit field work happens in August, after the end of this fiscal year with the financial report back to you in December. So we'll hold that schedule. We've got that time for the year. But the auditing of CARES Act last year and now American Rescue Plan gives us some new financial reporting requirements that we have to meet. So I'm learning about those from statewide resources, especially in the municipality. I've sent some of those presentations on to you. They're being tremendously helpful. That's $400 of membership very well. That's, um, four hundred dollars of membership, very awesome.
Any questions from Matt? Since they have a, uh, purely even have a supervisor's license, this is a big, big forum there, this is important. I'll ask you, uh, why is it you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you were, um, mentioning me. Um, I, this is, this Wednesday will be the last board meeting before the Fourth of July holiday, and I want to make some announcements. So please help me make sure I have all of this correct. So the Bato Festival starts, um, next Wednesday, the twenty third. Do we have a start and end time for that that you could share with me?
Three to eight P M.
Three to eight, thank you.
Yes.
And then the parade, the Independence Day parade for July fourth will be on Saturday, the third at nine o'clock. Um, has a decision, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Councilor Malusi. Um, has a decision been made on whether there will be a fireworks show in Scottsville?
Um, there is no professional fireworks show in Scottsville on the third.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to, to make sure.
However, there is a music performance supervisor price. So starting at five thirty until nine P M on the third is, um, free music at Doyar Park for the community.
Okay, music festival.
Yes.
All right, so I think, is there anything else over the Fourth of July weekend that, um, that I need to mention?
Yes, we have a cruising car show that also happens on Saturday, July third, from ten A M to two P M. And that takes place near the Uptown Shopping Center.
To Uptown. Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
That's quite a, a busy schedule for the day, so hopefully we'll get a really good turnout on that. If I might add a few observations after y'all's discussion about the legalization of marijuana. Um, I, I've long felt that marijuana had no business being a Schedule One substance based upon it really doesn't meet the medical, um, you know, risks that are associated with that. But I do think that there are a lot of, um, concerns with legalization of marijuana. Um, your discussion spoke mostly about smoking of marijuana, but of course marijuana can also be an edible product. And that is a little more difficult for, um, enforcing, if you will, than smoke. You can see and smell that, um, much like there are different ways that people can consume alcohol, Jell-O shots and things like that. So, you know, I, I guess I would say my thoughts go with you is to go with the county as we try to figure out how we're gonna deal with some of these issues. And then one of the other things, um, the testing on marijuana or other drugs, the testing results are somewhat different than on alcohol. The nanogram per milliliter level of a particular drug is not exactly the same as a, as when you're looking at alcohol, you know, point two O is a, uh, it, and, and those sorts of things. So it really does, it's gonna add a lot of complexities. Um, but, um, I, I really, the main thing I wanted to make sure was that I had all the announcements to make um, for the July fourth weekend to try and encourage some people to get down into Scottsville. Our meeting Wednesday has a relatively short agenda, but it has, um, a couple of pretty substantial items on it. The biggest thing is we're gonna be dealing with our housing policy. Um, and affordable housing is a major issue, but there are also some concerns that I have as regards the, the actual economic viability of increasing the required percentage of affordable housing and new developments because of the cost to the developer. So, you know, I'm, I'm really, um, trying to, to work through how we achieve our goals, yet do not make development so expensive that developers do buy right rather than rezoning, which will result in a, a quicker filling of our development area and force the county to go into the rural area for development rather than, you know, kind of increasing the density in our development area so we can protect the rural area. Um, another thing that's really coming up quite a bit, we have a project, a Midway Solar Project that's on the agenda. But I've received several inquiries from community members in the Scottsville district who've been approached or are considering um, offering their land for solar farms. So this is really a kind of a, a hot topic booming area right now. Um, there are some interesting aspects of, of solar farms. The developer is required after twenty to twenty-five years, if they don't renew the lease, to, um, restore the property to its prior use. Um, how we ensure that the funding is in place to, um, to make sure that actually happens is going to be a, a significant issue. And of course, something that will, that has already generated some interest, uh, we have on the agenda to increase the Board of Supervisors compensation by the same two percent that most county employees are getting this year. Um, school teachers and first responders, of course, are getting a five percent. And I, and I do acknowledge and recognize that for all of you who are volunteers um, on the town council and the mayor in Scottsville, that, um, you do it without remuneration. Um, but, um, and I want to thank you for your public service there. So those are the main things that I've got, but I would also like to just hear if there are any things from the mayor or any of the other counselors, uh, town administrator or clerk, um, that you would like me to bring back to the county.
I have nothing about any of the other stuff.
Supervisor Price?
Yes, Councilor Gritska.
This coming Thursday, we'll have the opportunity to talk with a guy that we have worked with for the, from the Department of Wildlife Resources for a number of years, both talking about Scottsville Lake and also about the James River. Are there any things that you, that are, that you have known recently that would be helpful in that conversation?
I can't think of anything right off the top of my head. I mean, I know, you know, we're constantly looking at our water quality and everything. And so, Councilor Gritska, thank you for asking me. Um, let me see if I can reach out, um, to see if there are any, um, any other inputs that I can get and try to get that to you, um, as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, the supervisor and Matt and I usually meet here on the day after a airborne supervisor meeting. Before our plan meeting is somewhere around the level of all first week. And I've also heard, uh, that she and I and P W R, uh, took a few notes and then, uh, supervisor Price and I and Matt, you want to buy our business and we got it for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a twelve o'clock to one o'clock engagement. So on Thursday, um, I could either come earlier than that, but I need to be at the event at noon or I can come afterwards, which would probably be around one thirty. So I would say, you know, ten thirty or one thirty probably would give us the, the full hour that we would like to have. What would work better with you and the town administrator?
Ten thirty would work out of Matt and I, that way we would make sure.
Okay, I will, I will be there at ten thirty, I'll meet y'all at Victory Hall at ten thirty on Thursday then.
Supervisor Price, I have two things that I'd like to just add. And that is a, when we met with you and your colleagues, the full board, um, one of the things we expressed an interest in was getting our maps, our comprehensive plan and our parks plan uh, included within the growth areas and included on the planning documents, resources. Um, what are the steps that we need to continue to follow to make that occur within this summer season?
I think just continuing to stay involved with community development. Um, you know, they're the ones that, um, have got the, the lead on all of those sorts of things.
Your, your housing policy that's before you is an excellent example of that, the, um, the first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Matt, can you repeat that?
I'm sorry, your, your housing policy that's before you on Wednesday is an excellent example of aligning things in that way. Um, the planning commission was very gracious and accepting to do that, uh, to, uh, acknowledge town policy and statistics um, that are within the policy. So the recommendation you have before you on Wednesday, um, lines up with town policy very well in the official, um, partnership in that important area of housing.
Stortion, it's hard for me to hear some of clearly everything that you're saying, Matt and Ron.
Um, one of the other comments is just in terms of trail network, networking and, and working together. So we're interested in increasing accessibility throughout town and connecting, um, pathways throughout town. I know the county is doing some really active planning in this area in a number of ways, but we'd like to better interconnect our planning efforts and our conversations. So who, how do we ensure that whatever's happening at the county level on a broad vision can work together with the town vision so that, again, we can accomplish some of the same goals together versus separately?
And that's community development.
Okay.
That they do that. And, and I will tell you, one of the big challenges we have is staff capacity.
Uh huh.
Economically, things are looking better than we anticipated, clearly at the beginning of the pandemic. But, um, we have a number of, um, in the Navy, we would call them gapped billets, you know, unfilled positions. And so what we, what we're facing right now is an opportu- opportunities, or what we're facing are opportunities that could allow us to make some improvements, but we don't necessarily have the staff capacity to be able to work on, on all of those. But community development and making sure that the work that we want to do together is actually put on the plan that the county has of work to be done.
Yes.
Because right now, we're, yeah, what we're really doing is we're coming up with all these ideas, but we don't have the staff to be, to actually do it. So that's where, working with community development, we can get these things on their, their work plan.
The other, the other thing that I experienced within the last month was I was involved in some school meetings and I learned that the projections that the school board uses for planning and growth over a five to ten year period is pulled out of the county's resources. And they were not including any of the town's projections and growth areas in those resources. So that's in, in, an immediate example and impact is that school planning isn't capturing, excuse me, our town population or our town potential growth and development and as we continue with these conversations. So I just want to make sure that we fix that.
Yeah, and I think that, that's actually an area where the county and the school board need better coordination to start with. So I think Ellen Osborne as our Scottsville District School Representative as well as community development would be the two ways to try and tie that together. As y'all have probably seen, you know, there's been a lot of conversation lately about what's happening at Mountain View Elementary School with the fifth grade potentially having to go to Walton and then.
Yes.
You know, so there's a, I hesitate to use the word disconnect. There's clearly not as close a connection between county development and school board planning.
Right.
And I think we, I think it's fair to say, and I don't mean to make a comment that would be perceived as negative about another electoral body, but the school department, the school system needs to start building more facilities. I mean, look how long it took to get Scottsville Elementary School addition approved, and it's still under construction, although it's getting very close to being finished, um, which finally is catching Scottsville up. But Mountain View is somewhat landlocked and there's only so much more they can do up there. So they, they've gotta be looking, I think, at either redistricting and or more construction. But that would be the two places.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? We appreciate you taking part in our work, especially in these.
I think Eddie's, Eddie, you're muted, Counselor. There you go.
I'm, I'm muted while I'm in a meeting here or while I'm at home, so I'm, I'm totally muted. Um, I've, I've lost track of a few things, but, um, I'm saying that, um, the Justin Area Board for the Aging, uh, moved the facility from Scottsville to Yancey.
Mm hmm.
Um, the Scottsville apartment, you know, thirty-three apartments, there are thirty-three potential participants. Um, transportation is supposed to be provided, and as you well know, John's kind of in a little bit of a mess now, you know, as far as funding, et cetera, administration, whatever.
Um, I met with Marta Keen last week about that, um, because of the concerns about, you know, the, the change. And what she actually expressed was, was multiple factors that led to the decision. One of which was when we went into, I guess, the virtual pandemic mode and the Boys and Girls Club was being used at a greater capacity. Um, and there was the difficulty of being able to separate in the limited space they had there, the Java and the youth. Um, the other thing candidly she said was that the, um, the facility in Scottsville um, was not at the level that they really wanted to be able to have it. They have gotten, um, guaranteed from Jaunt that they will provide transportation. And so I don't know where the funding would come and if it's even possible to increase the capacity and the quality of the facility in Scottsville to be able to, to bring it back. Um, but those were the reasons that she gave me for why the decision was made. That Yancey has a much larger, much better facility that allows them to do more there than they were able to do here in Scottsville. So that, that was the explanation in the, in the transportation. Um, she said, uh, Jaunt has committed that they will provide transportation, um, to Yancey for people in the Scottsville, um, town.
Well, I've, I've been to, you know, quite a few Jaunt meetings, you know, excuse me, um, Java meetings in Scottsville. Um, not, not the last two years, but prior to that, you know, four years. Uh, there was no any complaint about the facilities at all.
And also.
You've got thirty-three potential, you know, participants right there. And number two, and I know this is in litigation and we'll be finding out something here in the next month or so, I hope. You have a community center um, adjacent to the Alamo County Fire Rescue Station Seventeen, I guess they call it now, that, um, has been open to the public for years and years. It's, it's perfect for these seniors. And would save them, you know, an excessive bus ride up and back.
Well, you know.
We need to talk about that.
Yeah, what might be a good idea is to invite Marta Keen, um, from Java to make a presentation to the town council so that y'all would be able to, to hear from her what some of the concerns and considerations are. And then, Counselor Payne, as you just mentioned, there may be an option that opens up, um, that, that would be better than the, the facility. Uh, it, and I think it was kind of a combination of the different groups that were using the center, limitation on restroom facilities, um, and those sorts of things. But, you know, she, I'd say it might be a good idea to invite her to, um, give a better explanation to the town council.
Definitely support that because the wording of the facility not being to the level they need causes me concern as to whether the facility is then safe in meeting the needs of children who are there on a five days a week, ten hours, you know, potentially ten hour a day basis. So if it's not okay for seniors, how is it okay for children? And it's a county-owned building, so I, that raises some concerns for me, especially with, with you as a representative.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think part of it, though, was that, as, as I, as I recall, um, and I haven't been there any, over a year, um, there was only one set of restrooms and it would end up having children and adults in the same restroom facility. And that is, that is a concern just in terms of, you know, general safety for, um, for children. And that's not to cast aspersions on anyone's conduct or behavior, but it's just sort of a standard. Um, when you have a lot of kids, you generally try to keep them separated from adults.
I just, I just think that Scottsville is losing another resource.
I, I don't disagree with, with that, but I, I, you know, I, I don't, I can't say that her assessment is wrong at this point. And again, I think it would be helpful for her to come and talk to y'all. And if there are deficiencies in the facility that are fixable, then that's something that I think we look to put towards the county work plan. What do we need to improve it?
And I would ask her the question that, you know, that you just brought up. I would say, well, at this Yancey facility, are there, are there gonna be children there while these seniors are there?
Well, I, I think part of the difference.
Probably so.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for. Yeah, I'm not speaking for her is that there are more than one restroom facility for, you know, for people to use so that you can separate, separate the children. I think she also said that they have a storage capacity at Yancey that they don't have at, at Scottsville, which makes it easier for them for some of the stuff they do in terms of meals and things like that.
Okay. Well, when you get my age, you go to the closest restroom. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Counselor Payne.
All right, let's move along.
Matt, can you try moving that microphone a little closer to Ron? I'm having the same trouble there that Donna was. That's a bit better. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor's report, it's been, I've been busy. On the twentieth of May, supervisor vice met for recap of the previous day's one supervisor meeting. On the twentieth and the twenty-sixth of May, I started with interviews for a couple of applicants for a party for part-time positions. On first of June, I was with the chief and talked about the vehicle and all the items. On third, the annual special to host war and I at his home for a nice long meeting regarding town upkeep maintenance, bank keep maintenance trails. Talked about this upcoming meeting on seventeenth and then you can speak to that at the opening of the meeting at that time. With the planning commission meeting on the seventh of June. Now, I got invited to the meeting during the call. On Friday, he was in Charlotteville, which I took advantage of. Just a little bit of advantage meeting inside of the water, I think Paul. Planning purpose was to get my heart in the pocket. So a very opposition in the future that to be a one-two person to have that lead the town. I told McCullough that he was only going to help us after the first year. I'll become a senior of Scottsville and he told me, oh, it's in Scottsville, yes. So see how that all came out. Let's say on the ninth of March, we talked about this meeting and things that need to make sure it was on the agenda. One of the most interesting things that happened was last week when I got a call out of the way and Jill Porter. Mr. Porter lives in Harrington. She also has a home in Espa. And she wants to get retired from her executive position if she could. And she would like to volunteer for service somewhere in town. So thought for a pretty second, he said, economic development. I talked to Stuart. And I talked to this morning and the next day and Stuart did the contact information, which people all excited about working with economic development. So that's a plus. Now it's a committee of two, it's been a one. I talked to a great number of groups about participating in that meeting today that we hope we can have in September. And then I met with the chief on Friday afternoon. We talked about enforcing some of the new regulations that are coming off the website. We hope we can see this place on regular basis. So it's been a very busy couple of weeks. If anybody has any questions, probably just email me. Those who are going to be doing open discussions, I want to do that tonight. Mr. Bowley, do you have anything else to add this evening? You unmute yourself if you agree.
I want to talk a little bit about the ABC license the town applied for. I talked to Jeff chief last week and then today I had a chance to talk to the chief and Matt. And you made an application for up to twelve events a year to the ABC board. There's a new statute which allows you to do six, well, maybe the old statute allows you to do sixteen events, but in any event, the, the particular provision that we were talking about was a provision that required you to provide security when you have sell alcohol at events. And as I understand the, the plan from Matt, the town won't be manning the booths, selling the alcohol, rather you're going to allow your restaurant owners, your brewers and what have, what have you to come in and display their wares and they'll be the people in charge of, of selling alcohol to customers for money. And, and as I understand it too, they'll actually get the financial reward for, for doing that. I assume after whatever cost the town has of putting it on his, I assume the town may charge him a fee for having the booth. I haven't talked about about that. And so the person making the determination of whether the, the customer before them to request out to be served alcohol will not be made by the town or volunteer citizens that we've made by somebody who I would, I don't know if I use the word professional, but professionals in the business of selling alcohol to the general public. And they'll have a, a, a concern as a town does, but they'll have a professional concern of making sure that the people that are buying this alcohol produce the proper identification before I guess they even get to the, the vendor, however you control it, maybe not. And that also the limit on the amount of alcohol sold to the individual was regulated. We talked about that and it, it may or may not be necessary for Matt to hire additional security to supplement the town police force depending upon the amount of people that will be there. Following up on this idea about regulating smoking, you know, I think I hadn't frankly thought about somebody's right to smoke marijuana at a, at a town concert event. I think I, I tend to think all off the top of my head, this is all off the top of my head only that you can regulate somebody from smoking and intoxicant because it'll be cause agreed by others. And I, I don't, I think that's pretty, pretty obvious. I'd be surprised if you couldn't. As I think you can regulate cigarette smoking, although both, both of them is, is more difficult. The latter is perhaps more difficult than, than marijuana. I don't know if that helps the town council members, but I'll just throw that out there. I'm sure Matt's already thought about all this, but I didn't see any huge problem in, in having the town being a vendor of, of alcohol. For license purposes, I did ask Matt to contact his town's general liability insurance policy carrier to make sure that's covered by the, the liability policy and not buried somewhere in the fine print of something you're not supposed to do.
If I can follow up real briefly on that, Jim, the, the legal briefing that you shared this morning was very helpful. Chief Bowlinco and I made some follow-up with our, our private event security team and talked around with our restaurant owner down there closest to the, where our band is going to be. And to their, to their real credit, the Tavernon James team, after their initial excitement withdrew their interest in doing this. They're concerned about over enthusiasm here at the first big summertime event where the town population is the biggest that it is all year historically. And they, they passed up the opportunity to do what I'm sure would be some heavy sales on that day because they didn't want the community and their business to get any kind of bad reputation from people misbehaving on their first big opportunity to have a block party and a summertime concert in Scottsville. Like you said, we, we've got the flexibility to work up to sixteen outdoor events and partner with our restaurants on just one license. So it makes our event planning a little bit simpler and invites us to partner with our restaurants for outdoor sales. But here on July third, Tavernon James is passing up that opportunity because they don't want to come out the gates too strong with an event that turns into a mess. And I'm, I really respect the restaurant owner taking that longer term view.
Mr. Bowlen, I, I appreciate hearing the additional information about the ABC license and your guidance as well because the events committee was planning staffing and selling of alcohol in a very different format. And so knowing that as of July first, what you're recommending is helpful for us to have some adjust, time to adjust and make, make them changes.
Well, I'm not recommending any, I mean, no, you know.
Well.
Buying for insurance and making sure your insurance is covered. The recommendations is up, I'm hearing from Matt, you know, the idea, if you're going to do this, there's certainly nothing wrong with, with having an event in which the local beer brewers sell their product and display it. And you can also invite some surrounding wineries, vineyards, if you will, to
Right.
Play some of that and then, and then, and then sell that at an event. Those like that I've been to, it's not like you can go in and buy buy a ticket of twenty and get twenty, twenty servings. I mean, they restrict you the amount of, of servings you can take specifically to regulate the, and the ability to have people become intoxicated too quickly from consuming the product.
I think what's, what's different and the distinction for me is that the, first off, wineries and breweries have different processes that they can sell and serve alcohol at festivals. And it's slightly different. But the second is that in the past with breweries in particular, we've per, the town has purchased the alcohol, but we've worked with volunteers to serve it. And the town has provided the cash box. And with this update, what you said was that the town has the permit to sell the alcohol, but after that point, it is an official contract between us and our partner business to sell the alcohol and to manage the cash faucet so that they a hundred percent benefit. And that's the difference for me.
Well, but if you want to do it the other way, you can. It's just that it seems to me that then you run into more of a risk, what you're trying to avoid. That is, you have inexperienced people dealing with customers.
Right.
Who may drink too much and, and, and they don't know how to politely turn somebody, turn somebody away.
Right.
And then that creates problems too.
Okay. All right.
I mean, you, have you sold beer before? I don't know.
Yes, we have.
Has it been a problem?
No, not in the past.
Well, if it hadn't been a problem in the past, then do whatever you've been doing to do it. You know, that's, I mean, basically that's the, that's the, the process. I mean, if, if you've been able to regulate it and, and you've been satisfied with it, I mean, that's what the code allows you to do. It's.
Okay. Okay. So both are allowed. It's just a
Oh, yeah. Cause I got the impression you thought that you had to do it one way or the other. I was just queuing in on what Matt told me today and he just said, they decided not to do that for whatever reason.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. I don't, what kind of, how many numbers of people do you have at one of these concerts? I, I, I come occasionally to them, but I haven't ever come.
Yeah.
Fourth of July.
Well, we haven't, we haven't done it on the fourth of July. So if we do it, it'll be a new venture. But typically at our other music festivals, I mean, we're at four hundred, you know, people and that's been manageable.
Yeah.
Volunteer team.
Certainly a manageable number.
Yes.
The, 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 the fourth of July parade is, is a lot more than four hundred people in town.
Right. As is the music in the evenings typically. Yes.
I hope that was helpful.
To me, yes.
The other thing I want to talk about is that, is town going to discuss the VOF contract tonight, Matt?
You can take that here. So we've got the zoning part of it later, but the contract part is on you.
All right. Well, basically I've, I've, you've got a contract that's a proposed a, a contract between Dr. Hertz LLC and the town to, to purchase a recreational easement from Dr. Hurt. And that has the various and sundry terms in it. And then also in particular, one of the more, the most important term is if you have a deed of easement, which is a, uses boilerplate language from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, which was given to me by the director of the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, which they've used throughout the state in situations similar to this. And what Matt and I did was modify that to meet the town's unique needs and to mold this contract into the circumstances involving the long-term use of this property. And so it has provisions for potential parking, for access, for making improvements over the years of a certain nature directly related to recreational uses and so forth. And it's, it has some complexity to it and a lot of boilerplate in it because it is a VOF document. And as the years have gone by, they've got more and more sophisticated and more and more restrictive on what you can do. And what I tried to do with Matt's help is to, to give the town as much flexibility as possible to do what it wanted to do within the basic parameters of you're having a, a recreational use of, of essentially floodplain land. The town hopes to improve it, to involve it with its other recreational amenities that are located in the town over the long term. And in addition, the, the LLC would have, although it remains the nominal fee owner of the land, if you read this thing closely, you'll see that the, the fee owner really, and as if you're looking at an easement as a bundle of rights, a hundred percent being the most rights you can have, such as a fee simple, which is the situation with you own your home free and clear. And then some lesser amounts such as a temporary easement, which is a temporary use, which is a much less use of land. In this particular easement, if you read it carefully, you'll see that the town and VOF really have a hundred percent of the property rights here. There's really nothing the applicant, applicant can do, except there's one exception and that is he gets to use this land as density credit and open space credit to the extent that it's applicable with any sort of, any future rezoning involving the adjacent industrial zone land or the land is now currently so industrial owned by the LLC. And that reminds me, Matt, I still need a tax map number if there is one that identifies that parcel in the document. I don't know if you have that readily available. You could get it for me because after tonight's meeting, I'd like to get this provision off to Sherri Buttrick so she can pass this on to whoever's reviewing it for the, the town.
Yes, you have a pencil. It is number one thirty dash forty-three. And, and credit where it is, very, very due, Susan Gable is here in the room with us on, on the work session and she helped me make the initial contact on this grant, get some of the proof of concept and hold my hand while working with the state agency. I, I do appreciate your experience in getting us here to this point, which is modifying your model easement to, to actually do the transaction. Thank you.
Great. Well, I appreciate you having a copy of it. Maybe you can sit down.
Absolutely.
Jim, do you see any potential red flags in what we're adding here from the seller's perspective? I mean, is there anything in here that might endanger this or, or cause them to back off of this a little bit or change their position? You're muted. Sorry.
The seller, I don't represent the seller.
No, I know, but we're making some. I think you may have some experience with.
He's creating a sign this, you know?
Hey.
I can't, but basically he's got a piece of land that's in the floodplain, a hundred percent of it's in the floodplain. Right now it can't build anything on it. It really only has value for the particular use that, that he's, that he's allowed to take advantage of. That is for density credit and open space. Unless at some point in the future, floodplain suddenly becomes very, very valuable property. And from what I know, that's not inconceivable. Anything is possible, but it's not really probable. So he, there's also, I added new, new provisions in, in the document in the outdoors foundation part that gives us the right so long as the current parking lot is used as a parking lot to continue to use that parking lot for up to ten spaces, but the town has to share in any maintenance that's actually done on that lot. And we're assuming there'll be very little maintenance, but if at some point in the future that Dr. Hurt wants to use that space for something else, then the town's got to find somewhere else to park, maybe a portion of the property necessary. And I can't remember at this point, Matt, whether we stuck something in that allows us to use a little portion for parking in the floodplain. I don't think parking's forbidden in the floodplain per se. I don't think parking's uh forbidden in the floodplain per se. And the other thing we've got to have is an access route to the property so we can get to it for construction activities both now and in the future. And also for this general public to get to it. People are gonna drive to it. The idea being that. Uh this is not a park that will be used only for people who happen to hike in with a backpack and a tent, which won't be a tent, but a backpack. It'll be for that somebody could go and and um. Participate in the whatever recreational facilities you 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 construct there. At some point, if you put a, put something there such as a. Exercise, trainings, get trade stations, that sort of thing. Generally, things you see in parks. Um that they have some way to get to it. But if Dr. Hurt wants to move that access in the future, then he has the right to do that. And then we are sharing in the cost of the access of of whatever. I I think I had the cost of our access being shared, Matt. You correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
If uh proportionally to whatever maintenance costs are in the future. The the other exposure that the seller has, such as it is, is paying real estate taxes. We can't guarantee there'll be no real estate taxes, but I would, I would, I would think that if the. You never, well, you never can tell about the county assessor as as um as I'm sure Dr. Hurt knows and as I know. But uh as a principle, you gotta have some some use of the property. And if all you, if your use is nominal, your tax value is gonna be nominal. For this fifteen acres. And certainly, I don't know what it's, what this portion is assessed at now. They probably are not identifying that in particular, particular way uh for tax purposes at all. But now they're going to have to pull it out aside at a much, much lower value than whatever they're assessing for real estate taxes. The industrial portion of land. But but when you think about it, you asked me to look at it from the developer's perspective. The kind of the unique thing about this. That when you when you think about it is that the developer in the town really are have the same goals here. That is, the town is very interested in seeing this property, not just the the floodplain, but the adjoining land developed. Um in the most advantageous way possible for both the town and the developer. I mean, and they want it to be a viable project in the future.
Mr. Bowling, what ha- what happens if when um if the company changes ownership? Like Dr. Hurt's property changes ownership, what happens with this agreement?
Well, it runs with the land. It's permanent.
Okay.
Ever, in perpetu- in perpetuity. Long time.
No matter who owns it, got it.
I'm wrapped my head around what that really is, but forever is a long time. So uh there it is. Now, what may happen after the town council votes on it? We uh is that we wanted to get this contract signed, so the idea is that there may be some changes. And if they're not of a subs- substantial nature, I hope you're authorized, Matt. And me to make the changes and sign it and then come back to you if we feel necessary to ratify it. Otherwise, we could be. Advertising this thing back and forth for, I mean, it's kind of like a vicious cycle and it's expensive to have a public hearing. And advertise and so forth before you decide to purchase real estate, which you're doing, even though it's a permanent easement.
Ms. Cable has a thought here, having looked at it for a moment here with us.
Yeah, I I really have had a chance to look at it, but thank you very much for providing it. As an old park planner, there are any provisions in here about uh. Who would be in charge of any facilities that might be built on it? I'm just add that, you know, so wetland and. Uh I would think that the kinds of things that we'd be looking at, boardwalks, interpretive signs, with seating. I can't imagine, well, I mean, but but who would be in charge of planning a facility? Who would bear the cost?
Is of course, we're not building anything large in this park, but to to the point of signs, boardwalks. Who has responsibility for planning and maintaining all of that?
The town's totally responsible for the cost. And it's control and in the ultimate, you you know, usage is controlled by the town, but V O F also has the. As a trump card, if you will.
They can veto uses or construction that they think are inconsistent with preservation. And and they they do that. They they police their easement properties to make sure that the conservation easement really is being concerned.
Yeah, they don't mess around. They do it vigorously.
Conservation isn't it and then clear cut the land for law.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Under later of line over to Matt.
Okay, um some of our um staff reports, staff work has been heavy on this. Um as um as we've spoken some a little bit already, um we're getting ready for Veto Festival uh next week. And Independence Day on the third. So um. Uh we're very grateful to all of our volunteers helping to pull those events together. It does make for a lot of staff work as well. But look out for next uh next Wednesday for Veto and Saturday, July the third for Independence Day. The parade, car show, um concerts and outdoor fun. Um as we, as we said, we have the um. Alcohol sales on the riverfront booked through the um old fashioned banquet license. And then um the opportunity, but not the requirement to run this differently on events in the future. That's a new rule change taking effect on July first and something that might affect our event planning in the future. It's nice to have additional flexibility from ABC, but we still need to figure out the event details on all of those. That is, that goes to agenda.
If anyone has a specific question on it, it may come so far.
Ron, if I could just for a second ask Matt um um. About the decision not to have the fireworks. How how was that made?
I'm I'm sorry to pass the buck. I hate to. Um it was not my decision. The um the the fire department runs that with a little bit of financial support from the town council historically. What they need to do is order a large number of fireworks um in adequate time before the event. And secure the services of a licensed and trained master pyrotechnician um to supervise and run. The fireworks show. And uh they were not able to do those things this year, so they can't present.
So basically, the the pandemic, you know, stretched out, the emergency orders still in place, and they couldn't make plans.
All of our event planning has been harder this year because of a quick change from no events to events as normal. It's really, it's compressed all of our planning time. And that uh that might have been a factor here too.
Yeah, I think. And the folks at Cora's Mountain are having the same problem. So they're probably not gonna have theirs either, which may lead to an influx of people into Scottsville thinking we are. So are we gonna, you know, is the fire department, is anybody gonna publicize the fact? You know, that after, you know, a hundred years, we're not gonna have fireworks.
Our our marketing does not say anything about fireworks. I think it's conspicuous in its absence.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh closest fireworks show that I know of is in. But I know they will have something on Saturday.
In Wintergreen.
It's a shame.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just hard to bring it all together in a short timeframe, not knowing what the rules are gonna be. That's what it boils down to, so.
Yeah, it's also, it's also worth pointing out, though, that you need a master pyrotechnician for this sort of thing. And, you know, it kind of goes back, you know, to some of the other issues. Do we have related to volunteerism and training? And you you need someone who's willing and able to take the classes and 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 put it together. So I don't know. Uh it'd be interesting to find out, you know, if people are interested in taking that class, how they how they can like get the certification. And then work with the fire department, because I think fireworks are important down here. And and if people feel like it's important, they they should know that. They can go get the training and then we get the money and the fire department will be there to to put them off. So I think that's something that that's also important to spread the word about. Like, there isn't anyone with the certificate to do it this year. We need someone with a certificate. And um I think I think that's worth getting out on the on the line about.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in doing something like that. Blowing things up, sure.
Dude, I know who to connect you with. I will connect you.
Matt, could I ask you to check your audio input there again? Your your voice is coming through a lot better than Ron's. I think maybe we're getting laptop audio or something.
Yeah, I can barely understand Ron.
No, try that, sir.
Testing, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Alright, come here.
And Ron, uh one more fast thing. I'm I'm kind of, you know, catching up on things. How we um moving along with whatever remodeling needs to be done, you know, to accommodate the select D M B.
We'll get there in the agenda, Mr. Payne.
I I don't have a copy. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, I came in the office the other day and Mr. John Shepherd was a carpenter, taking measurements and looking at things. And he's one of several that uh will be submitting bids for the job. And hopefully, we can get that started in the next couple of weeks.
For all the concern about contractors who are just overbooked, we were able to get a couple of good bids.
Hang on, alright.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and uh there'll be some more on D M B towards the end of the meeting tonight, but uh police grant.
Yes, uh that, I I think it was January, February. Um council approved an application for um funding help for the police department vehicles and equipment. Through the United States Department of Agriculture, their Rural Development Community Facilities Program helps with this sort of thing. Um that was successful. Um and before you is the uh uh terms offer from USDA. They require town council approval in a resolution before moving ahead with the um with the package. What they have is um a a grant in the amount of forty five thousand three hundred dollars. And a loan at fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. So they're granting three quarters and loaning one quarter. Um the terms on that loan are five years, two point two five percent, um which is not bad for a car loan. Police have been working on double checking the pricing on all of this package to make sure it lines up with um what we applied on. Um and the inventory of some of the equipment has changed a little bit, so they they might change models slightly, but the pricing on it has not increased. So they're confident that they can get the work done for this amount. Um if that's um if that's to your pleasure. This loan resolution is on agenda for next week if you'd like.
Okay, any questions on that? A R P project plan.
This one is a little bit harder and with a little bit more money attached to it. Um the um American Rescue Plan passed in March. It's the, it's the largest single infusion of funds with the most flexibility for local action. That has ever come to the town council. In total amount terms, the project to build the levee is bigger and streetscape is bigger. But those were specific to one single project. And here with American Rescue Plan, council is able to set the goals. For what our community needs as part of our local economic recovery. After some delay to to get the rules set up, um US Treasury sent all of their guidance. And the state finance department sent what they needed to pass the money through. Um our town office has replied with all of the right acknowledgements and attended several training workshops related to the accounting and audits of this money. Um but the state has permitted that our first batch, the first half of the rescue plan money, uh which is about a quarter million dollars. Um will arrive in our account within two weeks from now. It feels good to be able to say that, that it's on schedule and matches the budget the council adopted. With that in mind, we're able to move forward on the rescue plan related um project plans. That council discussed uh in the two previous month's meetings, moving forward on these goals. Council only appropriated funds related to a bit less than half of the rescue plan funding. We have fully five fiscal years that this money will touch, so delaying the implementation and responding to future needs certainly makes sense. But we we can get moving on planning and procurement for some of the first half projects that are before us now. So I I'm looking for a little bit of advice on prioritizing those. Um how quickly to move on which ones of them, because I am worried about overloading staff. Lighting off more than we can chew and not doing a good job on these projects when we try to do too many things at one time. Um D M V select implementation is one of these. There's been very strong public support for building up the basic local government services. And um frankly, the amount of downtown business traffic that comes related to private driving this command. If we improve our office and bring a full schedule of appointments here every day, it'll bring people to town who might not otherwise come here. And you'll have um customers in downtown businesses throughout the day who wouldn't otherwise be in town. So we're under contract with D M D to deliver that service launching in mid-August. We have the hires and the procurement related to that. That definitely looks like the most urgent priority for us. Uh because it has an assigned date, we're getting to move on it. It's also the single largest project within our um first batch of rescue plan work. I have a couple of questions and updates about the parks enhancements. Um Mr. Grisco mentioned that we'll have um input from the Department of Wildlife Resources. Um learning more about how they can help us at Scottsville Lake. Um so we'll know a little bit more about what they can do and how we can help them. Next week uh after that meeting. But um is there anything going into that meeting that you want to express as priorities? To see how the office that used to be known as Damon and officials, how they can help us? Um Mr. Grisco, do you want to say anything more about that or are there other thoughts from council members?
The main thing that we were very close to doing a couple of years ago was they did have the funding. For the doc and then that fell through for various reasons. So it'll be helpful to see. How they understand, you know, what their budgets will look like in the future. I know they continue to be very favorable to Scottsville Lake. And the other part of the conversation is gonna be about the James River and issues there. So I think, Matt, I think you make a good point. We will come. Kind of with an update from them and that update, I think, will be instructive to us next week.
Yeah, I I hope that we can capitalize on the conversations that you've had recently, Matt, with the Department of Wildlife Resources about the riverfront. If if that sounds like there's traction and it sounds like they're interested and committed to to helping us move forward. Um and I'm looking at the uh agenda now, but you know, I think that riverfront organizing plan would be definitely be something to commit to. Especially since it's our, it already seems to have some legs. And I think um getting some feedback from them about what kind of documentation they need to invest in a joint partnership. Like they do in Richmond around the riverfront, I think would be good for us to know. I know you've got it in your notes here, but you know, like a concept plan or partnerships with lo- local businesses, which Laura has mentioned before. I think those would be um, those would be helpful. And I think um, you know, if there is a subcommittee or another committee that meets periodically. To sort of look at these things, I think that's, it's gonna be, it it will be needed, I think, to make sure that it it moves forward.
I I feel conflicted on the riverfront project. We we have, we have immediate maintenance needs down there now. Uh and and we get complaints about the condition of the riverfront. So it it seems important to respond to that some and provide some seeding or some trees. Or do a little bit of site work for drainage. If we know what a problem is and we have the ability to fix it, maybe we do that. But it also feels important to organize on this and do some planning work, connecting with agencies like like state departments. That have bigger budgets on this um to try to um make a more sensible plan for the riverfront. And connect it to things that are happening in the bigger picture. So I I present the sort of thought of splitting our our seed money half and half. Between a little bit of planning work, getting a team together and some unsense improvements where we know. Um what needs to be done, you can do it quickly. A little bit of proof and concept. um what needs to be done, you can do it quickly, a little bit of proof of concept and a little bit of fun.
Matt, can you um do or do you have any any familiarity with the history of um James River Reeling and Raftings lease on that land? Is that, because I think I heard someone say at some point that 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 was offered to the town and the town turned it down. And so reeling rafting took it and I'm wondering if, you know, it looks empty a lot of the time down there for camping. And I'm wondering if there's, if we have ever approached, we the town have ever approached James River Reeling Rafting, see if, you know, they would want to maybe split that with us and the town gets the, you know, some of it further up for a park and they get the other half for camping because it doesn't seem like that's, there's a lot of return on investment on land from them for them.
I I couldn't tell you the story of how it got to be the way it is.
Okay, do you have any sense of of whether James River Reeling Rafting would be interested in exploring possibly letting us use, letting us believe pay for some of that land and use it?
Ashley told me that she she wants the boat launch to look better.
Okay.
And I haven't taken it any further than that.
Yeah, and I thi- and I think, and I I hear you, Stuart, and I but I think like the um, I think the the place to start here is with the boat launch, which receives a ve- serves a very easy mutual purpose. And I know um Laura has mentioned before, I don't know if you spoke with Ashley Laura, because they have experienced seeding. And and so like that could be a way that they could contribute to that site as well. Um, and you know, it's one of the local partnerships we could cultivate sort of as a first step to, you know, make that boat launch more accessible and inviting the people who want to spend time on the river and then and then go from there.
Zach, did you say seeding like benches or seeding like grass?
Seeding like grass. Yeah.
Both are good.
Yeah, because my understanding is you can't just go down there right now and have a picnic. You gotta launch your boat and leave, right? So so.
Stuart, just to just to clarify two things, you and you and Zach. Zach, one of the things, when you deal with the I I I'm not so sure that seeding grass unless you're prepared to do it year after year. I mean, when the mud comes in and it wipes everything out, then it's not like a gra- it's not like a lawn. You know, it comes in and gets three feet, three inches of mud and it kills every single thing in there. And so it's it's a, it's a dramatically different process of taking care of the bank, not that it can't be taken care of. Then the other issue that you get into, Stuart, is the way that the DWR sites are typically is that site is a use site, so it's not for people to hang out there. And that's actually a very specific thing. And I'm not saying they will or won't change it, but it's specifically not designated for people to go hang out at the river. It's a, if you're going to put your boat in or boat out or fish or not fish, if you don't have a use to use it, you're not supposed to be there. That's, that is the way that it's set up. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but that's true of all of their sites. And to change that is not out of the question. To go back to the other thing, I will say at earlier councils, that much predates us in terms of how the those guys got a hold of that piece of land. And yes, there was some understanding, I think, I mean, I don't know if it was twenty years ago or thirty years ago or some long time ago that that land was possible to get. But the issue that you run into, and I've looked at some of those issues before too, five or ten years ago, but that one of the things is if we did have a piece of land, land on the river is a primo thing, then you have to get into an enormous amount of security for the land. So it's, it sounds nice just to say, okay, let's have people go on the river. But and and we do want people there. I'm not saying we don't, but it's a very complicated thing once you start to get. We are, my family lives on the river. We're at Warren and Hattan Ferry. We grew up, my kids grew up there. But there's very complicated issues in each site that, and and Scottsville's are more complicated because it's in the town and it really isn't the town site, it's the it's the DWR site. So and again, even when Jonathan's here on Thursday, he's not really here for the purpose to do much with the James. It's more for Scottsville Lake, although we will talk about the James also.
Yeah, so so my point was, I'm not sure I want to spend a lot, any money improving that site unless we're going to act, the town can actually get some use out of it. And and if if you can't go down and do it and and actually access the river and hang out there, then the town doesn't really get any value out of improving that site at this point.
Mm-hmm, that that's why we need to have this conversation. That's why we need to talk with the DWR and they seem very interested in cultivating this relationship. And so that's, that's what we need to do right now is find out what the possibilities are and what we need to do to move it forward. Because there are places where they manage it well with Richmond. And so that's what I want to know. Can they manage it with us as a site that so when people roll up into town, they know where the heck the river is? So that that that's what I'm, that's what I'm interested in pursuing right now and what the next steps are for moving forward and what it would look like for the town to to have that kind of relationship.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Um, over the years, it's there's been law enforcement issues down there.
I bet.
That's right.
Spill over from the.
Yeah, well, heck, I saw a guy hitting golf balls into the river off the levee wall a month and a half ago. I mean. Anyway.
Ms. Ms. Gable, please, what 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 comes to your mind?
What comes in my mind is that those uh comments made by by Dan Grisco and um and Zach. This is the idea of James of the James River waterfront is an enormous possibility, opportunity. And there are lots of other players that need to be involved in it. I would just certainly James River Association, Park and Conservation Recreation. That's part of the James River has been classified as a middle James as a as a theme and part of a historic river. Uh, DCR's got more money than the DWR. They've got grants uh for all sorts of things. So I would just really, Dan, don't get your your your, you want to bet that tissue duck so long. I really, I really hope you could get it. Uh, but let's not, I would just advise you not to rush into it. As a park planner, Mary Hubel Park and Chris Rayer, uh, to take time in this and and don't try to if you can talk about the the money for the for the boat ramp rate, so keep keep the James River waterfront maybe and invite some other players and just take your time with it. Very definitely take your time with it and uh do some strategic planning before you even get into it. Uh, CSX should be part of that discussion. Uh, there are lots of players that can provide Buckingham County Scottland across the way uh that they would want to be involved in it. So uh there are lots of players that are more get, you know, head over heels and thinking about this. Um, I would just uh sit back, advise you to sit back and talk about it, get all the players together. Uh, and uh move move slowly on it because it has such opportunity and uh it's complex, so.
That's, th- thank you. And that's, that's the um, that's exactly the point that I struggle with. We have this ten thousand dollar line item within the rescue plan on it to to start something moving. And I I'm looking for some feedback on how to parse that. I I my hunch is that a a pilot project in doing something visible down on the site there is important to show a commitment.
I think the nature of doing something about the flooding, getting mud out there.
But uh, so um, Dan, what what you mentioned about, you know, maybe don't, don't plant grass seed that's just going to get um washed away or covered up by mud. We don't want to waste our money either, but try to do something that makes a visible difference while we're starting to do the plan. Does that feel like an okay approach in dividing what we have or are we spreading ourselves too thin?
No, I think that sounds right. I just think, I think this is going to take some, you know, to to is Gable's point here, it's going to take some some work getting everybody's head at the table. So like those recommendations there, we should reach out to those people, those groups and say, this is what we're trying to do. And your comments here about having some other type of committee is a good one. It it sounds like it's going to need that.
Yes. Okay, I will get started on that. Um, the other one that comes to mind that has um that has an action deadline to to go or no go is on the um small business support and community partnerships part of this. Um, I hear a lot of feedback about vacant storefronts. We've made some progress on that with some new additions to town, but still a lot of concern on vacant businesses that have been uh big empty windows for a long time and to try to push that. Um, that seems to be common statewide, um and we have some framework and some help to try to push on that. So um, the um Department of Housing and Community Development followed up with me after we finished our first um Main Street facade program through the ARB successfully. They said that was good. Please look at this other thing now. Um, so it it's helpful when the grant agency contacts you and says, please apply for this thing. Um, their suggestion is the program called Community Business Launch. Um, which, for example, if we put in ten thousand dollars, would match with forty thousand dollars of state money. And they stand up a marketing and training program for new entrepreneurs and plug them into vacant buildings that we identify. So we put together a list of our um five most important vacant storefronts and we put out a call for folks to try to do business in those spaces, given the terms that we share. Um, we offer a training program that the state pays for on how to start up your business. And then we provide, they compete for it and we provide cash prizes to the new entrepreneurs. So you end up in a structured way recruiting new businesses, putting them into your vacant spaces and giving the best of them some seed money to start up. Um, that has an application deadline a month from now, but I've gotten some encouragement on how to apply. If that's something you're interested in pushing in, um, we can do that. Uh, or if that feels like uh, I don't know, too much of a gimmick, uh, we can look at other ways of helping our local businesses. Um, what are your impressions of that?
I have a question right off the bat, and that is, is this something that we could partner with the chamber on and split that ten thousand half and half so that it's a partnership from the get-go um towards shared interest and goals?
Um, absolutely. For the purpose of the application, the state does not care where the cash comes from.
Okay.
All right, this sounds cool to me. I don't know, I don't, it doesn't sound like a gimmick. It's that, it sounds like a good opportunity for supporting businesses and.
Yeah, definitely.
Getting attention.
Yeah. Stuart, in in terms of the kind of economic development outreach work that you had in mind, um, does this maybe line up with how you could, you know, could you use this to help recruit people?
Um, yeah, I don't see why not. I think so. Yeah.
Okay, to have some, some structure over these are the businesses, that these are the like buildings that we're interested in working in. And if if your problem is you've never started a business before and you need training, we can help with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there was a program too that um that I guess that you that we talked about, Matt, that uh that um this, I believe the state runs that um will train you to um, you know, put together a business plan and and start to evaluate businesses that are, you know, with a benefit if you open a business within the town. And, you know, there's a couple of of buildings that we have, I think that would be great for that. The the Dollar General Store for one and and what used to be the Barefoot Store um as another. And sort of one of that's one of the things that I've been doing um from an economic development perspective is kind of on my own. Um, uh, trying to see what kinds of businesses people are interested in in having here in Scottsville. And then seeing if I can find someone who's interested in opening a business uh and sort of letting them encourage them to to look at Scottsville. So Biffa Country Score Store, for example, um, there are, there seems to be a fair amount of interest in having a Mexican restaurant here. So if we can find someone, if I can find someone in Charlottesville area or locally that's interested in, you know, wants to start a Mexican restaurant, you know, we can go and have something for them. Um, similarly for the um, for the uh Dollar General Store, one of the things that that uh there's, has been suggested is having kind of a, you know, a made in greater Scottsville kind of store.
Whoa, firework.
And uh, you know, we could use that as sort of a, if we could rent maybe half of the uh, half of the Dollar General Store without taking away Doug's Maytag part of it, because I think that's important for them to have. Um, we could have sort of a a combination um visitor center promotion of businesses in town and, you know, so small sales of of local kind of craftsmen people around um in there as well. Um, so those, you know, if we can, if I could start to, start to put together a package for for people who are interested in opening those businesses and find them, then uh, then, you know, I think that that's a, that's a, that's a really good way to to sort of tackle this problem or start to tackle this problem.
Stuart, would you be um interested in contacting Linda LaFontaine and just sort of running this thought about her?
Yeah, is there any information that you've got that you could send me on it?
Sure.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we scroll along this, we need to move on.
That makes sense. The um, the the last um kind of progress item of of these where I I feel a little bit unsure uh after a year of emergency work, um, having some new money to respond to opportunities, checking in on things like the Hattan Ferry. Um, a month or two ago, council expressed support for the idea of getting things up and running at the Hattan Ferry. Um, Buckingham County Government and uh Charlotte Soul Abmaral Historical Society included that property transfer. Um, so the the property has moved and is back in the hands of the Historical Society. Um, they had some good press on the subject and are getting it um inspected and insured the way it needs to be so that it can run. We we passed, we a couple of months ago expressed interest in supporting that financially as a draw. And the um Historical Society made that official with um a one thousand dollar request for support to get the new project stood up. Um, and I I didn't want to say yes and do that without checking back in on council. Is the Historical Society a a partner organization that you'd like, you'd like to support to get the Hattan Ferry back up and running?
Yeah, just as a little bit more background on that, I was up, paddled up to to Hattan Ferry yesterday, as a matter of fact. And they've got the ferry, uh, boy, you know, I, last time I was up there looking at it, I don't think that thing would ever float again. And uh, they've got it up on the other side now, pulled up and it's looking seaworthy, so it needs a little work. But um, but they, you know, they've done kind of a lot to it so far.
The site looks good.
Yep. So I would support, you know, I think that that's anything we can do to increase the, you know, historical um uh interest in the town would be a good thing. And and while I was there um at the landing, a couple from Richmond drove up and because they wanted to see the ferry. And uh, you know, they were um, they were, had come all the way down to here. And I, you know, immediately pointed them back down to Scottsville is another place to go if they're interested in history. Um, see if we can get them down there, but uh, but you know, it's got that kind of a draw to it.
I think one comment I would make related to the money request is I I think ma- for example, maybe we say, if we really want to do it, we could say, we'll give you five hundred this year and five hundred next year or something. I I don't think we're beholden to giving them a thousand dollars at the moment, but I do think we are wanting to give them some type of support.
It 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 fits within budget, but it's not the sort of thing that we usually do, so I'm I'm a
Yeah.
It it feels like it n- needs a vote. I wouldn't want to give a thousand dollars to without, to a partner organization without council consent. Um, would would you like that on your agenda as?
My rec- my recommendation, if we were to do it, is to make it five hundred dollars this year, not a thousand. So I, so I would recommend we give him five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, splitting it up over the course of two years. Yeah.
But just, just to be clear though, the the one thousand dollars does fit within our budget for this year, right?
We we have it for fiscal year end. If you wanted to do that tomorrow, you could.
Right. I mean, I mean, we've, we've already reached out to make the commitment, you know, and if and if we have the money in our budget now for this year before it runs out, I mean, I'd just say we'd give it.
Again, I I don't agree with that. I I'd rather give five hundred dollars. We're, they're asking for a thousand. That's fine. They're asking for a thousand. I I'd like to give them five hundred.
Uh, with the proviso, we'll give them another five hundred next year.
So just to to point out, it's, right now, it's fiscal year twenty um one. So just to, to point out, it's, right now, it's fiscal year twenty um, one in June. And next month, it'll be fiscal year twenty-two in July. So that could be a five hundred dollar payment on this year's budget and a five hundred dollar payment on next year's within a month's difference. So is that what you're asking for, Dan?
Uh, sorry, uh, simplest answer is uh, yes, I think the idea would be, we, if we would say, whether it comes right now, if we were to, if we were to do it within this budget cycle, and we would give them that second support, again, five hundred dollars a year from, or eleven months from now, or it's, it's within, by the end of that calendar year.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure, quite sure if all of that.
Uh, let me, let me just say it again. What I'm saying is that I suggest that we give them a thousand dollars, but we're going to give it to them five hundred now and five hundred twelve months from now.
Oh, twelve months from now. Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Gotcha.
Is there a reason why you'd rather the second half go out at the end of the fiscal year than the beginning?
I think it allows them to do some more planning and not, I, I would rather us help them, but I think knowing that we're going to give them, they can count on that money coming next year. It, it helps them continue to look for other sources. We, we aid them in the process, but it also gives them something they can count on that's going to come a year from now.
How did they come up with the one thousand dollar figure in the first place?
Um, their, their total project budget for this is about ten thousand dollars for their inspections and their insurance policy. I don't know how they divided that up um, among all of their possible partners. That they're going to do some expensive fundraising um, to ask us for ten percent of their project total for, to get the ferry up and running. I don't know how they chose that.
Well, if they're going to do some fundraising, I would go along with Dan and and split it up.
Mr. Bowling.
I, I, if I heard correctly, you're proposing to do five hundred now and five hundred next fiscal year. Is that correct? You can't do that. Um, this council can't allocate to the next fiscal year. Legally, and be bound by it.
Okay.
You can say, that's what we're gonna do.
Well, well, simplest, simplest, simplest answer would be then, if, I mean, I, we're saying the same thing, Mr. Bowling. All I would do is to say that we will give five hundred dollars now with the intent to give five hundred dollars a year from now.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, Matt, do you know if they're doing um, like a, some kind of publicity or promotion of of project investors? Where we could get Town of Scottsville on uh, more visible in terms of supporting this effort? Because that's where I see like this, I believe in the effort of restoring history, right? It's a part of our history as much as it is of an Alamo world's, but it also is a great opportunity to get Town of Scottsville added to their efforts.
That's true. They, they have been gracious in naming us in the newspaper and TV coverage so far. I haven't seen the um,
Yes.
way that they're doing their fundraising campaign, uh, except from what I've seen in the media.
I would like to ask just that we, that we're recognized in some form, whether it's a town seal or a Town of Scottsville. I mean, again, they can adjust it based on other donors, but I would like to be included in some way.
Yeah, good point.
And I might add, you know, it's a good tourist attraction, um.
Yes.
At one point in my life, prior to Hurricane Camille, I think there were three pole ferries in the country, one at Warren and one at Hatton. Hmm. Um, the Department of Highways decided not to replace the one at at Warren, but it did replace the one at Hatton for a while. So as far as I know, there's only two of these pole cable ferries in the country.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. There'll be a mode, uh, item on the agenda for Monday that we can vote on.
Okay, I'll share that pledge letter and we'll do that.
All right, can do. Anything else on American Rescue for you?
No, sir.
All right, let's move on to Columbia Gas.
We, we, you'll remember the gas main break um, back in end of March, I think it was, a Friday, one of our fiber contractors um, punched a hole in the gas main on Main Street while they were doing the fiber work. And uh, it shut down business for a couple of days and caused some evacuation. Uh, we're very grateful that nobody was hurt. Uh, that repair work has been fairly slow and, to our mind, unsatisfactory since then. Uh, Columbia Gas's contractors have worked the, the better part of um, three months to fix everything. And coming up on Fourth of July in our parade downtown, um, we still don't have all of the brickwork done at our main intersection. So Chief Bowlinco and I have expressed our dissatisfaction with Columbia Gas on that. Uh, they are really going to try and get their contractors on to get this fixed. But it drew our attention to um, you know, what, what is it contractually that requires them to clean up after themselves on this sort of thing? Um, and that's, it's called a franchise agreement, where we, uh, Town Council by ordinance, um, grant Columbia Gas the um, monopoly to operate this utility in town. That runs for a period of time and secures their business to make investments in our system. Um, that contract, uh, the franchise agreement, was lasted after in nineteen ninety-seven on a twenty-year term and expired in twenty seventeen. So as we were talking with the maintenance company on, you need to fix this, we noticed, oh, legally, the agreement that makes them have to do it has expired. So that got them right back with their public affairs staff of, yes, this document is back due for renewal. Here are the terms that we would propose. Um, Mr. Bowling and I only got this um, last week. And the um, Columbia Gas staff were not able to join us tonight to present. They have government affairs staff, um, similar to the railroad, who work on these kinds of contracts. So um, by way of information, there, there's not much that I can do except continuing to work with the maintenance staff. Um, and we need to focus on this um, franchise agreement in an upcoming meeting, I believe. Um, Mr. Bowling, what can you tell me about franchise agreements? This goes back before my time.
Well, it's, it's required by the Code of Virginia, and I can tell you that uh, you do one from time to time for um, other entities too, I believe. I, I wasn't here for the last one, but uh, uh, they need this to satisfy their SCC requirements. Uh, Matt and I, I talked to Matt, I thought, Matt, you didn't get back to me. I mean, I thought about the idea of asking um, bigger of municipalities, cities, if you will, whether they do a attempt to get some services above and beyond just this plain vanilla toast kind of agreement uh, for a franchise agreement. And I, I don't know whether the town has any need for uh, gas services. You already get a reduced rate on that, probably. Maybe you don't. But that's something to pursue, and there may be some other ways you can get some services out of this that other municipalities are doing that we haven't thought of. It's probably worth exploring.
The efficient, you know, and timely repair work strikes me as the most important. When we did this in nineteen ninety-seven, we didn't have the quality of streetscape that we do now. And that was a lot of work and we're all a crowd of it, and it's been
That, that, we can, we can stick up, up claws in there saying, all repairs shall be promptly made. But that seems to be also to be able to address, it's a gas line, right? What have they got, an open ditch? I mean, it seems to me that they're um, I'm not, I'm not understanding what this current situation is, but uh, if it's a safety hazard, then you can address that through the, the, the uh, not, but I'm thinking about the building code, but OSHA standards and whatever, there's, there's some violation that has to be occurring if they're not preparing it promptly and if it's in the right of way.
It's not an ADA smooth surface anymore, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, uh, basically, they'll, Columbia Gas doesn't probably care diddly squat about the Town of Scottsville, but uh, if you squeak loud enough, they suddenly will, and they'll come down here and fix it. Call the Farm Marshal. I mean, that's the first thing. It's a gas line, right? Why, I mean, it's supposed to be operating good. It doesn't spark off. And it's what, what's going on? But there also seems like they're violent, they're not complying with some, you know, some codes to properly repair something like that. I mean, you want your gas lines to be in, not just um, uh, workman-like condition, but first rate, because when bad things happen with gas lines, bad things happen and people are killed. And uh, that's, we read about that all the time. That's just the thought. I mean, it's, certainly, we, that's, at the least, we should put a requirement in there saying, all, all repairs shall be completed within X days.
Yeah.
Period.
Yeah, that's good, like that.
A, a time limit for it. Okay. Can, can we wordsmith that a little bit more, Jim, and try it next month?
Yeah, that's, you don't have to adopt it tomorrow, uh, next week, but I would like to see, is there any way to get some benefit out of this? Free gas, if you will.
Sure.
I mean, is any, is it, go ahead, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll stop.
Um, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Bowling, but I just, I don't want to lose this thought, and that is, we're clearly not going to get the sidewalk fixed by the force. But I would like to, like, move those bricks into a safer location, because them stacked up themselves is another hazard.
Yeah.
Just so that we have them for when the repairs are able to be scheduled and completed, that we go ahead and move bricks into safe location.
Yeah, there ought to be some, some people that's, you know, required. I mean, the town has a, has a code too to enforce, you know, and just say, you know, we want it removed pronto, for, because you're going to have ten thousand people in town. Somebody gets hurt, you're responsible. That'll get their, maybe that'll get their attention. They probably, getting their attention is, is probably a big problem, Matt.
Made some progress, man. Okay.
Does that help? All right, you know, definitely, we want to put some uh, maintenance provisions in there, and that work will be done in a proper manner and prepare. You don't want to really say, repair should be done promptly. Things take three months to do something that should be done in a, a week, right?
Okay, let's move on to DMV. Anything else on DMV?
Um, ha- happy to announce a supervisor hired. Um, Ms. Latoya Hamlet starts work um, two weeks from today. She comes to us with um, public sector experience at Lynchburg's Housing Agency. Um, uh, healthcare, um, home nursing supervising career. She has direct DMV experience in their call center, which is the highest level of technical skill, and uh, has most recently worked at the Campbell County Treasurer's Office. Um, we had an excellent applicant, applicant pool, including some locals and several people with DMV experience. So um, I'm eager to welcome Ms. Hamlet to public service in Scottsville here in two weeks. Um, we'll, we'll launch recruiting for the, um, for other DMV clerk here positions shortly. But I think it's important that she have a say in those and help choose the rest of her team. Uh, the DMV office space renovation is the other um, big to-do item. As I said, Mr. Payne, we have two good bids in for those. Government Services Committee is going to study those um, tomorrow. Uh, at first glance, they both look um, responsive to me, and we'll try to choose the um, the better qualified and overall best value on those. Um, the target opening for DMV Select is August sixteenth. And the save the date for the ribbon cutting ceremony with the officials from Richmond is Tuesday, August twenty-fourth. That's the timeframe that we're working to.
Good. Any questions on DMV? All right, land use matters.
Okay, there, there are a, there are a few. Uh, next, next week is one of the larger sets of public hearings that Town Council has had. So I, I appreciate your, your patience in looking at these several issues. Um, and frankly, in, in setting them up together on an agenda, I know that it makes a big agenda, but I, I think it helps um, the public and everyone involved in seeing these things together, how these pieces connect to each other, instead of stringing out the decisions over a long time. Um, you get to look at it um, all at once. Um, so the items that you've, you've posted public hearings for, can have those hearings on next week, are seven. Um, the first and smallest is your special use permit at one thirty-seven East Main Street. Um, that's the upstairs space above Scottsville Supply, the old Masonic Lodge. The new owner, Mr. Taylor Schmidt, um, proposes three one-bedroom apartments there. Um, that seems to meet uh, a housing demand that we have to small apartments. Um, and consistent with comp plan for a mix of uses in the historic district. Um, so to that end, the staff report was favorable. Planning Commission recommended approval with consideration of um, requiring off-street parking for those residents. The business needs the on-street space, so we need to manage that. Same as we did for four seventy-five Valley Street, the old Dollar General Store. Um, Architectural Review Board has looked at a couple of exterior matters um, on that building. In particular, Mr. Schmidt is paying close attention to how he restores the old window frames. Um, so he actually chose um, not to get a CLA for brand-new windows, and is instead restoring the old ones. Um, that was interesting to see. The um, the larger items up on your agenda are a set of zoning text amendments and map amendments affecting several areas in town. Um, remember, your, your zoning text is the law that defines what property rights attach to different parcels of land. They define the kinds of uses that can go on that property and what kinds of buildings can be built there. How close buildings can be to each other, how large they can be. Um, that's your strongest regulation of private property rights affecting what can be done in different parts of town. Your comprehensive plan recommended um, a process of updating the old zoning ordinance. Scottsville mostly got its ordinance in nineteen ninety-four, when the town boundary is expanded to taking more of Admiral County. Um, we by and large copied the Admiral County ordinance that was in place at that time. And have updated a few things like defining a microbrewery when, when that business came in. Uh, but most of our basic zoning, especially around residential areas, is largely unchanged since then. Um, so the text amendments, most important of those batches, is your village residential. Um, that's about one-third of the area of the town and is defined as your um, growth zone, um, such as it is. Uh, the stated intent of the ordinance is um, encouraging residential development in areas of the town designated for village. Permitting a variety of housing types, providing incentives for residential development by allowing variations in lot size, encouraging compact development, and encouraging creative design to fill in vacant areas and keep compatible with the character of existing lots and buildings. That's the stated intent of the ordinance, and there's no proposed change to that. Um, Town Council and Planning Commission's concern in comp plan update was that the ordinance text as written didn't actually accomplish those things. So what kinds of regulatory changes would help us encourage an appropriate amount of development that's compact and creative and provides a variety of housing types for the different families who are wanting to come here? So with that in mind, Planning Commission's recommendation is to um, maintain the by-right housing types that we have there. Single-family, but also duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. They do strike the townhouse provision of this. In our small area plan process, we've heard pretty strong feedback that rows of townhouses kind of dominating the ridge top is not the kind of housing type that we want to see. We can do enough compact creativity just with single-family on small lots, duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. We don't need rows of ten townhouses all in a row. Um, so that's the only change to the uses. The most important change in your village residential regulations relates to the incentive structure on cluster zoning. Your old ordinance had a provision for clustering, putting houses closer together on a little bit smaller lots when they're served by public utilities, water and sewer, but there wasn't actually a density bonus for that. Um, it helps a builder a little bit to be able to put houses together on smaller lots and reserve open space on the other side of a project. Um, but they weren't getting any density bonus for that. Um, if they plan it well and put little houses close together, they actually did more of them compared to a sprawling layout. Um, absent any bonus, nothing happened. So there's, there's never been a constructive cluster development using the village residential ordinances that we have. With that in mind, Planning Commission recommended an increased incentive from uh, up to four dwelling units per acre in a cluster project. Um, that's still only half of what our downtown residential is in our um, kind of core residential area of the historic district, but it's significantly more dense. Kind of core residential area of the historic district, but it's significantly more dense than what we have in our area. Annie Weethas took a final look at this zoning for me, recommended a couple of minor changes in the definitions. But we also took a careful look at the setback numbers that are in this. And we're recommending a little bit more of a reduction in setbacks than what Planning Commission did. Just on the logic of what makes a buildable lot. When we looked at Planning Commission's recommendation on a small lot. You were really into tiny house territory. The setbacks excluded so much of the buildable area of a lot that just stuck in the center was too small of a house to really be practical, only. Four hundred, five hundred square feet. So if if you like the small lot size in order to have a practical building, the setbacks need to push a little bit lower. So our suggestion is five feet closer on the front, a fifteen foot setback and two feet closer on the side and eight foot setback. That's still not as tight as what we have in the downtown residential zone, but it provides a little bit more space for. A a bungalow type small house. If somebody were building what they were building back in the forties, you'd be able to do it on this lot now. That's the most important aspect of the texting. We have a couple of definition updates, not intent definitions relating to what is a quadruplex, what is a manufactured home? Those are minor. I think the feedback that you're likely to hear about village residential at the public hearing is. Does this, does this really help promote? The kinds of homes that we want to build for the future. So as you, as you think about. What does your ideal type of small neighborhood construction look like? What do you want to help local builders build? Does this really grant the kinds of property rights that you want to use? Those are the questions to answer.
Thanks, Matt. Hey, there was a presentation you shared with us. I'm sure if it was last month or the one before. It was really helpful because it had like some possible diagrams of houses situated on lots in different land area combinations. That would be I don't I can't find it, but that would be that would be helpful for me to look at again in anticipation. Again, to think about possible siding related to different. Types of buildings.
Sure, yes, I recall what you mean. And I I really struggled with that and to make the lot sizes fit. The small change on setbacks really helps to accomplish that kind of design. Do you need to see that now or do you do you want it for next week?
I don't need to see it now, but if you can send it out this week, that'd be great.
I think that would be helpful to have at the public he- uh, hearing as well, too, so that other people can visualize what it looks like and what we'll propose.
Okay.
Yes.
The the.
I have a. Um, just a couple of questions. You mentioned sort of four, like a cluster for properties on an acre. How does that impact the water and sewer? Because you no longer have rooms for a drain field or a septic. Tank, which because we already know we don't have water sewer lines throughout town.
That's right.
So how does, how do you accommodate that? Because that removes the possibility.
The the kind of small lot cluster that we're talking about only is legal when there's public waters.
Okay, so basically the developer has to plan that in because of that cluster then.
For exactly the reason you can give on a small lot, you can't do it.
Right.
And you might tap out the groundwater. So.
Right.
It puts a constraint on development. If there's an area that doesn't have big water and sewer lines now. We're not paying to extend those lines. The home builder has to, has generally cost for it. You consider that in the project, but the path of least resistance for building infill is where is there already water?
Plan. Okay.
So I would, I would reassure a property owner. Say up around Patton Miss Road. If there's not water lines there. You probably wouldn't see construction anytime soon.
Okay, so it both speeds up and slows down depending upon that access.
Yes.
For projects. Okay, and then the the other comment, you mentioned adjusting those boundaries. The the feet from the road side dimensions, what is the sort of size of house that ends up with? So if you don't. If you're increasing from a four hundred, five hundred tiny house to a small bungalow, what's the actual square footage?
Cutting, cutting five feet in the front and two feet on the sides gets you hang on four times five. It's only four times five. It's only twenty extra square feet. Right? You're you're building four feet wider and it's five feet wider in the front and four feet wider on the sides.
We've run into this in the past. Just remember, that's only the ground floor square footage. How is this typically built up?
Oh, I see multi level. Okay.
Right, right. So if it comes out to a thousand square feet or something, you might still build a two thousand square foot house. There is a two level.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I I made a little printout of some recent sales. Uh, thinking that there would be more folks here. Can you see the little home diagrams here? I was just looking at some of the recent sales that are of the sort of village architecture type. These are, this is a recent sale up at Pine and Holly. The price is up. This is, this is an example of a fairly large setback. With shorter setbacks, the house can come closer to the lot line. That's what that means. This on Jefferson Street is an example of very short setbacks, almost nothing. This would not still be quite legal under the fifteen foot that you've got. The corner of this actually is too close to the street. Those need to be pushed a little bit farther. And as you can see, when the setbacks are too tiny, it really becomes difficult to put a car anywhere. So that's, that's one of the reasons for keeping some setbacks is you're expecting people to still have cars. You need place on a lot. We have had very small homes sold in town. Uh, this was a recent sale, only a nine hundred square foot, two bed, one bath building. And it it earned a decent price. Looked nice inside. This is wonderful working class housing. It's pretty hard for a new builder to build at this price. The wood in this house is maybe worth forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars right now. But this is, if this is, you know, a useful starting home and a price point that you want to try to hit. We need a zoning ordinance that lets us build those on small lots. Stuck in different little corners of town. Here's an example of a duplex on Harrison Street with, that's probably about a twelve foot, fifteen foot setback. The porch encroachment doesn't count. What matters on the setback is the wall line from the street. So here's a functional duplex that's a locally owned investment property. This is the kind of thing that might work well as infill on different lots in town. Here you see the mixed use, buildings changing use over time. These are old buildings being restored. But this represents an example of village type housing stock that was workforce housing in the nineteen forties. You don't see a lot of construction like this happening now, small homes for for younger, older or lower income families. If this is the kind of thing you want to encourage, the zoning ordinance needs to be able to support that and not. Box it out by only encouraging large lot development. Here's one still on the small side by an example of new construction today, also up at Pine and Holly. That's a very reasonable Admiral County price point. And it has been hard to build new homes in this quarter million dollar target. If that's the kind of thing that we want to encourage, then our zoning needs to support that. Some of some of what we've seen here at the Planning Commission level. We want to provide support for folks who are looking for a home and trying to move this out still. We just don't have a lot of inventory now.
Okay, any other questions for Matt?
Uh, just a little detail, Matt, you are right on point with the duplex. I just pulled it up on GIS. That is fifteen feet. So. That's that's the setback we've got in the VR.
It's a trend die. The um, the map amendments are the last package that are up on this one. In the in the interest of, you know, prompt action towards the small area plan. Squaring up your text amendments with the actual uses of property that you want to see. The Outdoors Foundation needs public zoning on their wetland property in order to execute easement. There are several town parks that need zoning cleanup. They're they're currently being used in in the public, but they're not zoned for public, so we have the opportunity to square that up. The big one and what I'm sure will draw most of the comment at public hearing is the industrial parcel, the upper hillside of the factory. The proposed rezoning is from industrial to the new village residential category. If the intent of our plan is not to continue industrial zoning there, then it's proactive to rezone for the use that you want to see. You still have final control over any significant development. That cluster project always requires a special use permit. So we do further study more public hearings and another council vote before any actual site plan is approved. So it it's certainly not the case that making the zoning decision next week opens the gates to immediate development. You still have control over any site planning. I got an interesting call, talked about this with Mr. Boeing today, on one of these projects in particular. Up on Confederate Street. And I I needed a question answered before I, before I made a recommendation on this one. Right when I started work here in twenty eighteen, the town closed on the purchase of a couple of lots on Confederate Street. One council involved in that. Is is everyone familiar with what those lots are?
Yeah, I was on, I was at council when we when we made those purchases. One connects down to the street that it goes down to the Van Cleef Nature Area.
Right.
For example.
I, as I, as I recall, the the intent of that purchase was to expand our public spaces. Build out the Van Cleef Nature Area size and add a trail connection from Jefferson Street up to Confederate Street. The the neighbor called, as we, can you see the diagram? Yep, okay, so the the neighbor here adjacent got our public notice on us and called asking what was going on with it. And and I explained the intent to rezone for public. And she was actually skeptical about that. This property has never been improved. The trail wasn't built. And this continues to function as a side yard between the two houses. And they they actually mow it somewhere in between. The the one mows it and the other mows it and treat it as the yard. The owner was not keen on having a ton of public access going through what they thought of as their yard. And so may not be in favor of the rezoning to public. It's currently still zoned village residential. If that stays and thinking about what the new zoning would be, that would provide for two house lots in that space. The town bought this lot and certainly free to sell it again to anyone interested in buying. Or we could keep it as part of our parts and trail system. In in this little sketch, just wondering to see what could be done legally. I kept a fifteen foot corridor going down. So if you really wanted to run easement and keep a trail, you could do that and still have two, two house lots that were of legal size. That one really kind of confused me because I wasn't present for town council's original planning on this topic. And I I don't know what the intent of owning this parcel is.
Although we did did discover today that the value of that property is considerably more than we paid for it, so.
That's true.
It is. It's good to know that.
So we we have these, we're going to have multiple voting voting items on different parcels. And you may hear public comment going either way on them, but. Before you rezone it to public, it might be worth thinking about. Is this property that you really want in the public domain for a long time? Or since it's zoned residential, would you rather see it up for sale?
Right, my recollection is that was, that's a future trail network for those residents to access downtown very easily. So that was the intent behind the purchase.
Yeah, I think I I I think that's, I got cut off there for a second, but what I was going to say, Matt, is. The that land, if you look on the map, is very much. Easy to see a corridor related to a much larger trail system and the idea of the town getting into. Selling a piece of land like that to go back to. Create some type of housing to me seems like a really bad idea and that the I, the issue of. Getting into allowing. Opportunity for people to build in other parts of the town is great and. The issue of building is 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 real, but I I that's not at all something we want to get into is getting rid of. A part piece of land and turn it back into building.
Yeah. I tend to agree with as as we expand our park system, you know, hold on to it. But cleaning up the zoning so that it is public and not residential is important.
Sure. The only comment I will make about that, those rezoning at public. You know, the property owners have obviously been spending their own time mowing our lots. And so I I think it would be our due diligence that if we do rezone it public to make sure that we are, we are doing the maintenance. On the on those on those lots.
One of the things, Zach, just to interrupt you just for a second, I have found it fairly common. This isn't the only place that's happened. People tend to not realize that they're using somebody else's land. That's a very common problem. So. I'm not, as much as I want to be careful about this particular situation. Often people think they have land that they really don't. So I I'm just, I'm just saying to them that. It, this land isn't their land and it's land that is land that is. The town's land and we do want to work with them for it, but the issue of, I'll just say this, we could talk a another time, but we've run into that before where. People have mistaken lines that they thought were the towns or that. I've mistaken lines before. So in terms of understanding it, it's this particular thing is. We want to make sure that we communicate with them, but as it is our property, we will work with them in the future to make sure they're. We do a good job with them and with everybody else who may use it.
I have a, we have a number of roads around town. That aren't used as roads. What are those zoned as? Because I don't think they're zoned public. So how, what does that access sort of easement look like for those spaces?
That that's a, that's a great point. The the zoning doesn't apply because they're not parcels.
Oh, that's the difference.
Their rights of way that that we own. But they exist for the purpose of connecting parcels and going between.
Because that would clarify a whole lot for the residents. In terms of use. It also, but it, the thing is, it still keeps it public. And some of what I'm hearing is that there's concerns that suddenly anybody can come through that parcel that wants to, which. Is kind of the point, but it's also the point is to serve that that red, you know, that pop, that sort of neighborhood directly, right? I mean, that was really the intention behind the purchase.
Yes, we can't exclude anyone in the world from these trails and alleys, but then maybe we have a security responsibility.
What, one thing, Laura, too, that I will say, even getting into the bigger stuff and whether you talk Atlanta or New York City or any of the massive trail systems. It's not a, it's it's a very common thing that. In the short run, somebody may say, oh, I didn't want to have this connection. In the long run, every other homeowner will buy that house because they have the connection to that property.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And and again, it's it's this big, long vision of connecting all neighborhoods to their safe alternatives versus the road to get to downtown or into uptown. So. That's the value I see in it.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we can certainly bring that up with comments, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, anything else? You all have your homework assignments? Not tonight. We're finished for tonight. We will see you Monday.
Good night, sir.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
See you later.
Yeah, stay healthy.